Welcome to this work session of the Board of Trustees of the Monroe County Public Library. We haven't had a work session in a while, haven't needed to, but we have a number of important items to act on next week, so we thought we'd go over those tonight. We start with a proposed COVID-19 emergency sick time policy, and Kyle's gonna share that with us. Hi, Kyle.
So, we have already had this policy in place at the beginning of this year until June. We did note that we would reevaluate as needed, and that's what we're doing tonight. We would like to propose to begin this again, starting September 1, and ending December 31, 2021, again with a proviso that we'll review it before the end of the year. But this provides our staff support in their safety and being able to respond to concerns they may have if they're experiencing COVID symptoms. It provides them with 10 days of sick paid leave. That's for all staff and would support our guidelines and regulations, asking people to stay home if they are suspected of having COVID symptoms. Are there any questions?
So, generally, when an employee is sick, they use their vacation time?
No, they would use their sick leave. When I said for all employees, I meant material handlers that do not have benefits. They don't have a way.
Okay.
And staff don't always have the accruals, especially if they're brand new or haven't, you know, have already had to use sick leave for whatever reason. So this is to support them in keeping us and them safe.
So this is 10 additional days for COVID, or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that I knew it was the additional.
Right.
Yeah, no.
It is additional.
And for COVID specifically, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What we have found in the last few weeks and hours is that we've had several people on our staff who have children who have been quarantined. And so this provides them with the opportunity to, you know, the need to stay home with their kids when they're quarantined for COVID.
Yeah. Yeah, and the COVID symptoms, you know, can mimic other things such as flu and colds. And so we have people saying, "Well, I think it's only a cold should I come in." And it's like, no, why don't we take our-
Play it safe.
Play it safe and use these processes and policies we have available to us.
Yeah. No, I definitely agree with the 10 extra days because it's very virulent right now.
Right. Exactly. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Next, proposed Smithville services contract. Ned, you're up.
Mostly, just want to answer any questions if you have them. Hopefully, what you have is pretty straightforward. What that bill is for is our internet access for both of our locations and the network connection between our main library and the Elletsville branch. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
And have we had a five-year contract with them? Are we at the end of a five-year or three-year contract?
I think it's a three-year.
Okay. So this is just a renewal?
Yeah.
So is this showing if we sign up for five years, we get a lower rate?
That's right. Yeah. It's the 60-month rate is pretty close to what we're paying now. There's a slight increase on the, what's called the point-to-point between the main library and the Elletsville branch. And the way that was explained to me is that they're giving us a much bigger discount on that already than what a business would normally get. And so for the renewal, that had to go up a little bit.
And is our plan to go with the five-year at the lower rate, or?
I think so. I don't know that we've decided for sure.
I think, Gary, I'm looking to you, Gary. Is that what we were considering? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And it's paid month by month. It's just that it will be a five-year term that would be at that rate.
Yeah.
And we're also looking at them for providing our services at Smithville, so we'll be able to have the same carrier.
Yeah, that, yes. And I'm happy to, I don't have much more information about that, except that it does look like that's a possibility. I think we'd be paying something similar, and that would greatly simplify our network planning for the new location because it would sort of duplicate what we have at Elletsville. If we didn't have something like that, we'd probably have to look into like a VPN or remote connection, so.
And we assume Smithville will service that area?
Yeah, they told us that they could, so.
Yep.
Knock on wood, that's the plan.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ned. And from Greer, we're gonna get an update on the continuous improvement activities and proposed Happio or Hapio?
Happio.
Happio contract.
Good evening. So, kind of like we've done for some of the previous meetings this year, we'd like to continue to give you all an update on our continuous improvement initiative. This is a very important, effectively, an internal review of some of our operations and our best practices. We're coming to some important moments in this process, and we'd like to share those with you. And then I'll talk a little bit about Happio specifically. So sort of a summary to date of the continuous improvement initiative. This began with staff-wide conversations in 2020 at the February 2020 Staff Day breakout sessions. We've had a very sort of inclusive and participatory review with staff where there have been a number of items that were pointed out that could be improved. So we've been following a set of guiding principles throughout this process ever since. Those include inclusivity, meaning involving all staff in the process on various levels, transparency in making sure that every step of what we do is documented and shared across staff, and consistency in that we're having monthly progress reports from all of our eight teams. Those progress reports are then shared with all staff to review so that everybody's kept in the loop, have an opportunity to provide feedback and some insight, and then drafting proposals, having review and edit conversations, and eventually formal presentations to the leadership team. To review some of what we talked about in a previous meeting, we have four major themes for continuous improvement that we focused on. Those include roles and responsibilities of staff, accountability and performance management, ongoing training, support, and professional development for staff, and communication and collaboration in the workplace. Those four themes have yielded eight specific action items. Each action item is assigned to a team. Those action items, under roles and responsibilities, there are three. Those are to review the roles and responsibilities of Community and Customer Engagement Unit, that's KOKU, to review the Access and Content Services Unit, which is our Collection Development and Management Department, and to review the role of the strategist within our structure. Strategist's role is a pretty unique role in a public library. Under the theme of accountability, we have two teams. One is to propose a performance management program to better evaluate and develop staff job performance, and another is to review the current hiring and retention procedures to better understand evolving trends and to attract and retain the best staff. Under our Training and Development theme, we have one team charged with proposing an enhanced system-wide onboarding, training, and development program with the requisite roles and resources. And finally, under the theme of communication and collaboration, we have two teams. The first is charged with proposing an enhanced or alternative Intranet solution to allow for better communication, more streamlined search and retrieval of organizational information, and a shared digital space for all staff, as well as a launch point for our many other enterprise solutions. And we'll talk more about that in a second. And the last team, under Communication and Collaboration, is looking to establish the best practices to help achieve a greater degree of transparency as to decision-making, how feedback is incorporated in the decision-making process, and how constructive feedback can be best facilitated and leveraged for ongoing improvement at the library. So each of these eight teams has been meeting once a month, in some cases more frequently than that, from March through August. Each month includes a team progress report, which, as I said, shared with all staff, and then a review of that team's work for that month with myself and Marilyn. And then the team work really culminates in a formal presentation to the leadership group. It's a written proposal, on average, five to eight pages long. Everyone on the team participates, and everyone on the team participates in the actual presentation to leadership, which is, I think, maybe an exciting or nerve-wracking process for some folks who aren't normally involved in this, but to say the least, it's been a great team-building exercise for a lot of staff, and I think people are getting a lot out of it. We are, and then we take these proposals, we turn them around and share them with all staff, and provide a survey for feedback. So the idea is, from March to August, everybody's been following along with each team's progress, culminating in the presentation to leadership and the written proposal. And then everybody takes some time to read through the proposal, consider the presentation, and then provide more written feedback on this. So that's the feedback loop that we keep referencing. We ultimately take all of this feedback and, in consideration of making our final decision as to whether to adopt a proposal outright, to suggest modifications and edits and then adopt it, or to take a look at it down the road and say, "This is something that might be more appropriate to implement in the future." We are, as of now, halfway through this process. We have had four team proposals go to leadership and been sent out to staff for review and feedback. We have four more to go. The fifth one starts tomorrow afternoon. As of this week, we have made some of our biggest decisions to date. We do have a plan to simplify parts of our reporting structure, to place managers and staff in positions to work more closely together, to ensure more consistent customer service across all locations and service points, and to ensure consistent training and development opportunities and expectations for staff. We will be sharing this part of the plan out with everybody tomorrow afternoon. And then a final report on the continuous improvement initiative we will share with you all at probably the November meeting, once we're through all of the proposals and we've considered all of the implementation plans and made decisions as to what we're going to implement when and in what order. So before I talk about Happio specifically, are there any questions about the continuous improvement project?
So this is not a big overhaul of the positions in the library? Like, we did that several years ago, right, when people got new names like strategists instead of-
It's very similar to that.
It is?
We are, in fact, what we will be describing tomorrow will be a new structure.
Okay. I was just curious.
And the proposals have been shared with staff, so they're familiar with them already, but we will be, we will, we will be sharing what we've accepted and what will be moving forward. But it will, in fact, change titles and change primarily at what we call our leadership level.
Okay. Okay. How long ago was it that this was?
2015.
Okay. I was just trying to think time.
And so, and, and, and I think, from those conversations early on, and the things that came up that were, that were frequently cited, were in relationship to large units where there were those personal relationships and reporting structures were difficult to understand. So that's what we're attempting to remedy here, and I think have done a good job in doing that. But it will affect some staff on, in the leadership levels and also what that structure looks like. So between now and then, and certainly Happio is one of those things that one of the teams is gonna, presented it as a solution to our tools that we used. And so we will be bringing things to you between now and November, when those things have been accepted or approved, to continue to move this process forward.
Does the leadership team vote on any of this, or how is it?
When it's presented to them, there's a discussion afterwards with just the leadership team members in the room. And there have been lots and lots of individual meetings and conversations and feedback with that group as well.
Okay.
The four teams that are, is their work done now, more or less?
More or less, yeah. Yeah, they, they basically prepare the proposal and the presentation for our consideration. We ask questions. We share our decision about how we're going to implement their proposal with them, but effectively their work is done. And it's handed over to, in some cases, an implementation team; in some cases, it's just us and administration following through on the proposal. But basically, the team's work is completed once they present to leadership.
And are these happening about once a week or so?
They were once a week, beginning early August or mid-August, and then we took a week off at the halfway point.
Phew.
In part because, you know, it's halfway through and it's, you know, it takes a lot of energy. And also because the first, the first four proposals are pretty significant, because as Marilyn said, they indicate some structural changes, some changes in roles and job titles. Changing the structure of our KOKU unit alone is a massive undertaking, so we want to give everybody a lot of time to consider that and provide some constructive feedback, and we have gotten that very constructive feedback, so.
And I think one of the other things that has been really important for us is that the teams, nothing happens in a vacuum, right? So the teams have worked together with other teams to find out how they were either affected by or would affect another one. And so many of the things that were decided for Team One were reflective of things that Team Three was also working on suggesting or putting together. So those first four had a lot of interconnections where getting those together, we didn't make decisions on them until those were all done, so that we could understand and know whether or not we needed to change anything in any of them to make it all work. So it's an iterative process.
Is there an implementation timeline for, for those changes?
Yeah, we're, we're working on that right now.
We have some general dates and general sort of roadmap details for implementation, but the specifics, for example, you're currently an SIA, your current supervisor is this person, it's now gonna be this, this is how it's gonna impact your work, and so on. That's what we're working on now.
Lots of little pieces.
I see you, Greer, on, you're on a few different teams. Are there other people that are serving on multiple teams?
I'm not sure, actually, if there's anybody else on multiple teams.
Is Christine Snead on more than one, or is she just?
We, we have some folks on the team rosters, which are not listed in the report you're looking at, you know, the staff members from different units that are on more than one team.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Just to help with like the cross-team communication.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, and some of these folks have participated in these kinds of projects before to some extent, so they're relatively comfortable. For other people, we just really want to get some input from an area of the library that we maybe don't normally hear from. So it's a very interesting mix of people on these team rosters. And, and I'm only on here a lot because I'm supporting people, I'm not doing much of the work. So we've got a bunch of team leads and facilitators that are just doing a tremendous amount of the work.
Other questions on this than Happio?
So Team Seven, which is the second-to-last team, the first under that last theme of communication and collaboration, was charged with looking at our current Intranet solution. We've had the same Intranet solution, more or less, in some form, for about two decades. It's a Drupal-based tool we call Lint. We manage it internally, we host it internally. It's served our purpose for a long time. It's kind of evolved to meet our needs in various ways, but more recently and particularly on the heels of adopting Google Workspace in 2018 and 2019, it hasn't really kept a pace with our needs as much as it used to. So Team Seven was charged with evaluating that tool and looking at possibilities for enhancing Lint or looking at alternative products in the marketplace. And we looked at two others. One was a product by a company called Atlassian. The product is Confluence, relatively popular in terms of digital collaboration. And the other was this product called Happio. Happio is a seamless Google integration platform, which, for obvious reasons, was very attractive to us. So we started talking to these companies at the tail end of 2020, even before we brought the team together, just to get a feel for what the marketplace looked like. And then narrowed those choices down with the team and had some lengthy discussions with the product reps, had some demos, had some sandbox trials, and just did a lot of work. This Team Seven was a fairly large group. We wanted to get representation for more or less every area of the library, since this is gonna be a shared digital platform that everyone will use, you know, to varying degrees. So the team strongly favored Happio in its evaluation, mainly because it addresses most of the needs that were identified by staff for an Intranet solution. It has a very intuitive and familiar interface. It's, it's modeled after a lot of popular social media platforms, so the basic layout of the main interface is quite familiar, quite intuitive. And it has that seamless Google Drive integration, which for us, using Google Drive more and more in the workplace is almost a must. And Happio literally syncs with our instance of Google Drive, so you can be within Happio in your own instance of Happio login as a staff member, pull up your Happio, or rather, your Google email, your calendar, and then search in Google Drive, all from the same interface, while doing everything else you might do in Happio. So it was pretty impressive. We worked with the Happio reps on a contract that we feel works for us. This is a fairly standard three-year contract. We are looking to add the analytics package right up front, and the reason for this is we want to make sure we're getting our, our money's worth, and we're getting good use out of this tool, and not just assuming that staff are using it because it is intuitive. So the analytics package is gonna allow us to evaluate that right from the start. There's a one-time implementation and onboarding fee totaling $4,200, but the annual charges after that are $16,200 a year, which includes $3,240 a year for the analytics package. After consulting with Mr. Bunger, we had a few follow-up questions for Happio that they were very quick to get back to us on. Most important were, it references in the contract Happio's right to increase the annual cost at any time. This is not uncommon with technology services, but it doesn't specify by how much. In talking to Happio, they told us that they have yet to increase their annual costs, which is nice, but not a guarantee, so we asked them to cap it at 3%. So they built that into an updated version of the contract. The annual cost increase would not exceed 3%, if at all. And the second piece was, there was nothing specifying the turnaround time for customer support, which is really important with a tool like this. Even though we do plan to have on-staff sort of administration roles for Happio, we're gonna need to reach out to customer support, particularly at the beginning. They told us that their average for customer support turnaround is between one and six hours after receiving word from a client. We asked them to put in the contract no more than 24 hours on all customer support requests. So the updated contract that we'll send out to you all on Friday will include those two additions. And just a little bit of information on Happio. The company was started in 2016 in Helsinki, Finland. It now has headquarters in Amsterdam and New York City. It's what they call a Google Cloud Partner, which means they're built on a Google Cloud platform, and they have Google Workspace Validated Integrations, which is one of the main reasons we're very interested in this tool. And some of their other bigger-name customers include Gant Apparel, Rovio Game Development, the people responsible for Angry Birds, the World Wildlife Fund, a subsidiary of Tide Detergent. And we were gonna be the first public library to sign on with Happio until earlier this week. Somebody beat us to it. I don't know who it is. So again, the updated contract will be sent to you all on Friday. We have a tentative plan for a five-stage implementation process with the Happio onboarding team to begin next week or the week after. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are they providing professional development, professional training?
There are some training tools that they give us, but they're not, they don't do onsite or virtual training. They basically train us to do that for our staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
I noticed that, I was reading the Atlassian kind of little sentence. It says it allows you to identify top collaborators and influencers as well as trending topics within your channel. Does that mean that portion is going to have other people evaluating other people outside of the norm of the chain of command?
It just means that we can see what the activity levels look like across staff, who are the most active users, what are the trending channels, the term you referenced, is one of the three sort of structural pillars of Happio. Channels is like a social media feed internally. So we'll be able to see what that activity on channels looks like and what some of the trending themes by, say, keyword search might be, yeah.
So those trends would be maybe customer service, so-and-so in this department has been doing well?
Sure. Trends in programming, stuff that we normally talk about via email right now. We are hoping to migrate a lot of those conversations into channels on Happio, and we will be able to see and follow those conversation trends there.
So the advanced analytics, they're just gonna give you data, and then someone's gonna interpret those?
Correct.
Is that the staff that would interpret, or Happio?
We'll, we'll do that probably through Ned's Department IT, basically giving us the tools to make sure that it's being used effectively, that we are following the best practices for use that we're gonna lay out. And then, you know, ultimately, I think we want to be able to compare the use of Happio against, say, Lint over the last five years to make sure we did what we were charged with doing. So I think the analytics package is gonna help us a lot with that.
Is Lint something we built ourselves on top of Drupal, or is that a product that we pay for?
Ned, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we pretty much built that ourselves internally and have, yeah, and have updated it accordingly ever since.
And with Happio, is all the library's data stored in Google Drive, or is it stored on their servers? And if so, is there a provision, you know, to get your data out if you end the contract with them?
So our, our data will really still live in Google Drive like it currently does. We're, so that's sort of like the-
So you still own your data?
We still own the data through Google Drive. Now, technically, I don't know if we can say we own it. I guess that's a Google-related question, but, but that stuff still lives in Drive. What will live on Happio is sort of the equivalent of like splash page info. Okay, here's the children's department and some images and roughly how they're structured and what they do, and then all of the content within it will be linked to Google Drive. So I don't know what the percentage is, but there'll be very little that lives on Happio specifically. Most of it will still remain in Google Drive the way it currently does.
In Confluence, you mentioned Atlassian. In a sense, that's a big wiki that you create documentation in. Is there a component of that, like that, in Happio? And with that, like if a department uses that product to create documentation for their department, is that data retrievable if you leave Happio?
I think the equivalent of doing something like that in, in Confluence, we would still be doing in Google Drive. Not, Happio doesn't really provide that.
I was gonna say, look, if we can get you their privacy statements and their documentation on that, Greer's right, most of it will be in Google Drive. There will be components of it that live in basically the Happio cloud on their servers. You can think of it as a sort of a plugin for Google. So yeah, there will be some stuff that's on their servers as well, in your cloud.
And then one last question from me. You mentioned another public library. Are there other libraries, non-public or other cultural heritage institutions, like museums that you know as customers?
Just the World Wildlife Fund was the one I found that was closest to where we live, yeah. They are, they are still a relatively new company. I mean, they only, they originated as a Google offshoot in 2010 or something, and then became their separate company and called themselves Happio in 2016. But that's not that long ago, so they're still kind of in the post-startup phase.
Other questions on this? Thank you, Greer. And then the next item, our last item before public comment, the construction bids for the Southwest Branch. And Marilyn and Gary are gonna lead us through this discussion.
So we had three, three bids that came through for construction, and the apparent low bidder is Strausser Construction, and their bid is about $10,600,41, including the alternate, which was our, our amphitheater and the labyrinth within it. So that is, is about 1.2 million more than what we had estimated when we were going through that process earlier this year. But Gary, Gary has prepared for us a financial comparison of where we were earlier in the year, and it's included as the last page to this document or our packet today. And, and it lists both what our estimates were in March of this year and also what the bid is now, as well as what we anticipate the available funds to be for the project. And we come in with enough money to pay for, even including the alternate, it's quite close. But I think what we want to also understand is that we, we will still be maintaining that in total $3 million reserve, a million dollars in operations, LRF and Rainy Day, in, in addition to spending these dollars on the branch. So after the bid came through, I had some additional conversations with Christine Matthew, our architect, and we circled back to Strausser and said, all right, is there anything that was at a high rate that could be removed, value engineering as they call it? And they gave them a list just last night, and so they're still working on it, but there was a list of, of multiple items. In fact, it's 10 different things, and two of them had already been removed because they would significantly change the, the project in some way. But the total is around $100,000 that could be reduced if we were to, to, to select all of those items. So it's a bit nickel and diamond at this point to get to a, a different place, but we should consider, and they're going to, they're going to do the pros and cons of accepting any of those reductions and how it might impact the overall either appearance of the, the building and/or the way it works and, and/or whatever else that might be. So they're going to come back by Friday and prepare a document for us that I will send in the packet that will include specifics to what those might be that could be an overall reduction in cost. But I wanted to have a conversation with you all, have an opportunity to talk about the, the financial plan and just see what your questions are.
Is, is Strausser a local company?
They are. Strausser is the same company that we worked with on the downtown library renovation in 2015, 1415.
I, I guess we knew that prices have risen. We were expecting some of that. I guess it's very nice that we are in good shape as far as the library has money right now, so.
So I talked a little bit about why the prices might be so much different than what the bid was, and so remember, those bids were, were last updated in March, and that is a really volatile time. Chris described that they're doing a project with another place in their mechanical bid in January, came in at $150,000, and it was $30,000 more in March when they bought the material. So those are the kinds of increases, that was a 20% increase. Those are the kind of increases that they're seeing on things that the, that the contractors are trying to, to hedge their bets on right now, along with the very specific numbers that they got from their subcontractors and others. A lot of it is supply chain delays. And apparently, while the pandemic was going on, there was a lot of building going on. We all know that we went home and fixed our houses and did all of those other things and kept using those products, but the people who made them didn't keep making them. So they're just catching up and a lot of things are behind. So even the timing for getting materials is really delayed, and so that impacts the overall costs of, of building and general construction as well. So that's the reasons why the numbers are, are, are bigger, but I don't expect them to go down.
And just to reiterate, we'd have $3 million in reserve in three different funds, LRF, Rainy Day, and Operating Fund?
So we could still be in good shape if there's a 15%, 20% increase?
Well, this increase, there should not be.
Okay.
This, this bid is what it should cost us.
Okay.
However, there are always change orders in any kind of a construction project, so we should anticipate that there will be some increase in this just because of things that are unforeseen or something that doesn't work when we're in it. So yes, there could be, there will be some increases to this that we don't yet know what. But in terms of bigger increases in it, no.
10 or 20% would be not something we would anticipate.
No, no, no.
Not that it, I mean, I remember when I joined the board was right around, you know, the Indianapolis debacle.
Oh, yeah, that parking garage, yeah.
Well, the library up there, and I don't know what caused, but it went way over what was planned, and that always frightened me.
Right. Well, and I, I suppose if things were just, just, just terrible and it was going to, there's something that, I'm not even going to go there.
No, no, no. Don't do it.
No, I, no, the bid should be our bid, and that's the contract that we would sign. And in fact, even at that, the contract, if we accept this bid next week, we would be accepting the bid at $10 million, whatever it is, whatever. And if there is any value engineering that we also accept, it would be accepted as a change order which would reduce the, the, the bid, but we will be accepting this bid.
We have the opportunity to look at the value engineering stuff.
Before, yeah. Yeah, I should be sending it out on Friday.
Okay.
And you'll be recommending whether to...
Accept it or not.
Yeah. It seems out of 10.6 million, 100,000, unless, you know, if there's any negative downside, it wouldn't seem worth it to...
You're kind of right. I mean, I, I will give you, I have a list. Light fixtures, $9,000. Utilize site water detention system by BioClean in lieu of specified manufacturers, $8,100. Utilize Armstrong Cirrus acoustical ceiling tiles in lieu of USG Eclipse, $6,200. So this is, for the most part, changing the specs, specs for, for interior finishes.
Like as an example, the acoustic tiles, if they're really better, I mean, sound in a library is a big deal, so you want to pay for the, you know, better ones unless there's a massive price difference, and that's, that's not going to help us much.
The, the biggest dollar amount on here is deleting sunshade screens from the south elevation, which is $36,000, but that means we're deleting shades and screens from the south elevation, which will come back to bite us, you know?
And increase the heating costs.
And increases the heating cost or cooling cost. So that's where we are, and I think that, that overall, I would, I would, I tend to think that the bid that we got is probably the bid that we got and that we should probably stick with it, but we'll wait and see. I mean, I want to hear what the evaluation is from the architects to see what it really would do in terms of affecting our overall project.
So this will be an action item next week that we'll need to act on to keep the project moving forward, so I'm not hearing them, but if any, if there are concerns, you know, we, this is one place we can discuss those. Of course, we'll make a decision next week.
I'm just curious about the value engineering process, if it's even worth going forward with something like that, if it's so, like, it sounds like some of these things are things that we really need or would help. So why would we go through the, just to, just to save 100,000 or what, what's the thinking behind that?
Yeah, and, and I think they went to Strausser first of all with the question is, is there any big-ticket item that you can identify that, that either we're off-base on or that you see that has a, not a huge impact on this project overall that we could do, and they didn't have any. So they came back with the things that I guess that, I'm going to guess that they may have dealt with products like these on other, on other projects or something, and so they're familiar with them and this, so that they, they suggested it. But I don't, I think that Christine and Chris are already in the midst of doing this to find out, to really determine whether or not it's in our best interest, and they'll let us know. They, they will make a recommendation to us.
And I think it's, I mean, maybe it could have come back a lot higher number, and then it would have been worth looking at.
Yeah.
But, and there's, you know, we have the alternates that are a little over 200,000, but again, out of 10.6 million, it seems not that significant a number. And of course, you know, the biggest is the amphitheater, and that seems to have a lot of potential, you know, to add to what we could do with the space and programming, and so to me, that seems worth it.
I agree. I think the amphitheater's a really fine idea, and the labyrinth, what's...
It's in, it's inside the, the...
It was that, like tile flooring that like comes as the one piece or...
And so we assume it would be something that would be really attractive and fun for kids to play on and, and look good and...
I mean, I use them in my church life, so, for meditative things, so.
It's a great community asset, though. My, I also hope that we may be able to find some grant opportunities that we could, that we could go, that I think an amphitheater might be really attractive for some grants.
Any other questions or comments on the bids? Well, thank you, Marilyn and Gary and everyone else. I know you've had to put numbers together, Gary, many different times over this process and always done a great job of it, so thank you for that work. And of course, the rest of the team who helped get us to where we are now, and look forward to revisiting this next week. It's now time for public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the board, please come to the podium and share your name and thoughts with us. Seeing none, we are adjourned.